...of the May 5th meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to those?
I'll make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing on hospital annexation, so I need a motion to suspend the city council meeting. Move.
Say it.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you. Now, we need a motion to open the public hearing for the hospital.
Move.
Say it.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Matter of record that the legal notice for the public hearing was published in...
So, move.
Say it.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you. Tim, guide me through this, make sure I do this correctly. We have Christie Sturz here, we hired Christie to assist us in the annexation, and I'm almost sure Adam Miller's here, representing the hospital.
We just want to go with what.
Thank you, Adam, for coming. But, really, it's a public hearing, so Christie, if you would, please. There's a process we have to go through, we want to make sure we do it properly.
Good evening, everyone. Christie Sturz, Public Management. Just briefly, I want to go over the process and the fiscal plan that was prepared for the annexation. As you know, annexations have kind of a two-step process. There will, there is a fiscal plan that's required to be prepared that goes over all of the information in regards to the annexation area, what services would be needed, what the costs are, and so forth. That was prepared, there will be a resolution that would need to be passed ultimately to approve that plan, and then there's also an ordinance to be passed. Neither of those are up for passage this evening, that will be at a later time, I don't know, this next meeting or after that, how you want to do that.
Well, I think we were, Christie, not to interrupt you, though, I think the plan was if everything goes okay tonight, that we were going to pass the ordinance on the first couple readings.
Okay.
And then table it. Is that...
Yeah, halfway to minimum of fourteen days before you would make that.
Pass it.
Right.
So, just a little bit of background on the annexation. This is a super voluntary annexation, which means 100% of the property owners have signed a petition to the city, and this was, the Adams Memorial Hospital is the petitioner on this. That enables a more abbreviated process to occur for the annexation. The general area is where the hospital was located. It has city boundaries to the north, as well as city boundaries and Mercer Avenue to the east, and the abandoned Norfolk Western Railroad to the west. There's approximately 133 acres and a population of 192 persons. This includes the existing resident count at Woodcrest Retirement, Community Villas, Garden Apartments, and the nursing home facilities. The area is currently zoned for R2, multiple family zoning, as well as agriculture, and upon annexation, if it were to be annexed, it would translate into the city zoning that's comparable to that R2 residence and Ag District. There is currently no assessed value shown to the area because this is tax exempt for the purpose of property taxes within the area. The area would be brought in as part of Council District Two. Just to review briefly state law requirements, in order to annex an area, you have to show that it is contiguous to city boundaries. There's two options for this. The first is if it is 12.5% contiguous, it can be brought in as long as it meets one of three options: a resident population of three persons per acre, the area is 60% subdivided, or the area is known for business and industrial use. There's a section option, a second option, and that would be if the area is at least 1/4 contiguous to the community, or 25%, and needed and can be used by the community. If this area is 26% contiguous to the area. As far as the overall justification for the annexation, I think that the, what has been included in the plan is in regards to economic development, and as we relate that to your community, I had just read an article, gosh, it was within the last month, that talked about annexation and property taxes, and some of the change in philosophy, really, for communities, LOAT tax is about income tax, and that's replacing a lot of your property taxes right now. And, you know, the argument that this article was making is quality of life types of things, such as your hospital, and those types of things are important to the future growth and well-being of your community, and so there may be a little bit of shift in thinking as that's concerned. And so, I, an American speaks to this more than I, but I think that that was a big part of this overall annexation, and just to help out the hospital. Also, there's, it expands the boundaries further to the south, which would, you know, anytime you're bringing in areas, you're enabling future growth to occur adjacent to the existing community. We looked at the services that were provided, or would need to be provided by the city department, and there was a fiscal plan addendum that was provided to you that gives kind of the update. If you remember, at the last meeting, it was the night that you had passed the stormwater fees, and so, and there were some conversations about using a methodology of three, the last three months of the hospital's bills versus the last six months in regards to water and sewer, to get a more accurate reflection of that. The overall expenditures that we are seeing include 1,200 a year for police, that would be an estimated 10 additional costs for them. In addition, there will be .34 acre, or .34 miles of road that would be brought in, that would need to be maintained for 6,800 a year. Then, we showed that the difference in the out-of-city rate versus the in-city rate would have a reduction in revenue of $12,210 annually for the water, and for the sewer, it would be $49,614. The street lighting, they're projecting an additional six street lights to be put in for approximately $8,000. And so, then, the final page of the addendum kind of shows what that overall balance would be for the combined expenditures and reduction in water and sewer. You then would also be offsetting some of that by an increase in the stormwater, which will increase by approximately $17,000 a year until you get to your additional increase in 2017, that'll go up to $23,000. There'll also be some addition in regards to MVA and LRNS of approximately $6,500. And so, you're showing, really, kind of after some of the initial investments are being made, of approximately $40,000 a year, that would be kind of that balance that you would be losing. The total five-year balance would be approximately that reduction of $200,000.
Okay. Any questions for Christie? Sure, that is very confusing to most people. That's the process we have to go through. I support the annexation, I think the hospital is a very important and partner with the city. You know, whenever we have visitors in our city, I always take them out past the schools, to past our churches, to the hospital. Most people are very impressed that we have such a hospital that is locally run, and it's not with the big hospitals out of Fort Wayne or Indianapolis or anything, so I think it's a, it's a very good asset, it's the second-largest employer in Adams County, not just Decatur, but Adams County. I think we're fortunate to have it here, so I'm in favor of the annexation of that property. Anybody have any comments?
I think sometimes those numbers can seem overwhelming. I think when we look at services provided by the city, you know, what, I mean, in-city rates, utilities, they're paying for everything that they get. Real cost is only, really, when you look at the numbers, is about $8,000 to $10,000 of services that we, that are normally supported through property taxes, that we will be providing to that. So, I, I mean, I understand we are losing the potential of our revenue, but the reality from services provided, everything's pretty much covered. It's the, the property tax piece, which, as Christie pointed out, I mean, we, we are receiving not much, but some off of income tax through LOAT and COAT.
That's correct. I like the idea that we're extending our boundaries a little bit further out. Right now, we're blocked without the hospital's annexation, we're kind of blocked for any growth. We'll never get to Adam Miller's house if he's not annexed. I'm teasing, Adam. Adam happens to live on the other side of the property there.
But, long-term, you know, let's think 20 years out, 25 years out. I'd like to see 33 as the boundary of, 33 this way is city, and the other way, I think the potential for growth, long-term, also justified.
I think the hospital's a great partner to be with, they've proven that over the years that they've been here, and I don't have to go on any further.
Yeah, and I'll just add a couple of comments. You mentioned that they're one of the more significant employers within the community, but they also pay significantly higher wages in comparison to many other employers, which is a real asset to our community. And lastly, I would suggest that the hospital's been an outstanding partner over the years to the city, and this is a way for the city to partner with the hospital in return.
Good. Anything else? Adam, the other comments you want to make, representing the hospital, don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I just wanted, if there were any questions, if you'd like to answer them, so...
Okay, thank you, thanks for coming up.
The hospital certainly would like to become part of it, so, yeah, I think most people think it already is.
Yeah.
And I think for the people out in Woodcrest, who live in the villas, or the apartments, they already believe they're part of the city here too, so until they truly bring you in there, yeah.
Okay. So, we really do... Have any comments, any other comments from any of you?
What comments?
Pro, con? Either way, okay. Need to really entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
Move.
Two...
Two motions.
Two motions in one, two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
I make a motion, we open the council meeting.
Say it. Motion second to reconvene in the city council meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. So, I think that brings us then to, we could pass an ordinance this evening, if you so wish, on the first two readings for the annexation of the hospital.
Yeah, the resolution first, to approve the fiscal plan.
I don't quite understand why we have a resolution and...
Yeah.
So, Christie said so. Christie said we ought to do this, so we do it. This is a resolution to accept the fiscal plan.
So, move.
Dash one.
Resolution 2015-5.
So, a motion to introduce resolution 2015-5.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Tim?
Is there a motion to adopt on short title? Or did you...
That's what we did.
Oh, I thought the motion, I'm sorry, okay, I thought you said introduce. Okay. Resolution 2015-5, short title, resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which sets forth policy of the city in regard to Adams Memorial Hospital's super voluntary annexation.
So, we need a motion, if so desired, to approve resolution 2015-5.
Move.
Say it. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Thank you. So, the next item then for this annexation would be ordinance 2015...
Dash five.
Dash five. And I would recommend that we, if so desired, to pass this on the first two readings and table it to the June 2nd meeting.
Move ordinance number 2015-5 be placed in its first reading by short title.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Oh, I'm sorry, let's write down, somebody's got to read that.
Okay. I want to get this off second immediately. Ordinance 2015-5, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territory commonly known as Adams Memorial Hospital's super voluntary annexation to Decatur, Indiana.
Move for passage of ordinance 2015-5 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion second, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Kent Collier.
Yes.
Trevor Cook.
Yes.
Bill Crown.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Move ordinance number 2015-5 be placed in its second reading by short title.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried.
Ordinance 2015-5, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territory commonly known as Adams Memorial Hospital's super voluntary annexation to Decatur, Indiana.
Move for passage of ordinance 2015-5 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion second, all in roll call vote, please.
Kent Collier.
Yes.
Trevor Cook.
Yes.
Bill Crown.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Move the ordinance number 2015-5 be tabled until our meeting on June 2nd for adoption at that time.
Thanks.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Thank you very much. At the last meeting, we discussed capital campaign funding for projects that are coming up, that are really included in the stellar. We're about to proceed if we get the stellar or not, so these projects are still going to move forward. We had committed some funds, or we discussed committing funds, and at this time, there is a resolution available for the commitment of those funds. Basically, it's $2,500,000 over a five-year period. It's not saying it's $500,000 a year for five years, it's saying it's $2,500,000 over five years, because some projects may come in quicker than others, and we need the flexibility to, to make those commitments, to fund those projects. There is issues that we may not have the funds available, so there's a provision in this resolution that says we have to have council approval before you do any of the, any of the projects. Tim, does anyone else want to explain? I think that's pretty well that.
Well, and the other thing the resolution does is, we previously, last year, adopted resolution 2014-6, which, if I recall, appropriated 750,000, or committed 750,000, and then, over a four-year period, another 300-some thousand. And we're repealing that. That was tied to us being designated as a stellar community last year, we will not. This resolution does not tie this to us being awarded stellar community status in 2015. And the reason is, regardless, we're going to move forward with these projects. If we're successful in being declared a stellar community, some of the Phase 1 projects will get done within the stellar timeframe of four years, and it would free up money for us to do other projects, but if that doesn't happen, we're still making the commitment that we're going to move forward with the Phase 1 projects, and this $2.5 million is geared towards that commitment over the next five years.
So, that's the explanation. Anybody have any questions on that? So, Tim, we had Tim draw up a resolution that basically states what we just discussed here. It's resolution 2015-7, so I'd like to have someone make a motion to introduce resolution 2015-7.
So, move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried.
Resolution 2015-7, short title, resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which expresses council's support of numerous capital projects to be undertaken within the next five years, including projects identified in the city's stellar strategic community investment plan, and which commits city funds for such capital projects.
So, we need a motion then to approve...
For passage.
For passage on resolution 2015-7.
Motion.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Okay, and there's probably three or four copies here that need signature.
Please sign these before you leave. Done the mayor's report here, we have a sculpture tour request, they asked if we would donate $1,000 to the sculpture tour event. Paul knows nothing about this problem, so...
Would we do last year?
I don't think we did anything last year.
We never did.
We didn't, we never did, so, it's a request that's up for discussion.
They have several new initiatives, they're trying to grow it even more. It's been great for the community, and I'm in full support.
It's, it's expanded, it's gotten better every year, which is a good thing. The idea was to bring people to Decatur, and it's doing that. They've added a few events, and I think that's made it even more successful, so...
We have a sculpture in our business, and I've really been floored at how many people have come in, taking part of this tour.
We have one out in the lobby here at City Hall, it's really nice. Anyhow, up to you guys, we have the funds available in the city council, you know, nothing in the mayor's fund again, but wow.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, we look at all the designs, the downtown design plan that we're working on, a lot of it is centered around the success of sculpture tour and making it permanent part of our landscape, so...
Please comment.
It makes us, it's important that we support it, so I will make a motion to $1,000 towards sculpture tour this year from the council.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. We're waiting for Wellness Group, and I believe they have the blessing of the Main Street Program, I put Larry Ish on the spot here, he happens to be in the audience, but, you know, they want to close an alley for June 5th, 6th, and 7th, which is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and the alley is next to Sherwin-Williams Paint Store, that alley there. They just want to make it a pedestrian alley, just to try it out, see what that's like, so they're asking permission to close that alley.
I talked to Sherwin-Williams.
Yeah, we had, yeah, I know, I talked to Sherwin-Williams, and they did not have an issue. They're the only ones that use that alley for a delivery.
I don't think they don't have any.
Yeah, they didn't have any, they did not have an issue for that time. Now, if we're going to do something permanently, that may be a different story, we didn't, we didn't discuss that, but for that weekend, they're fine with it, so. I'd say we just need permission to go ahead and close that alley.
Make a motion and grant permission.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Jeremy Gilbert, operations manager here, is involved with the Parks and Recreation, and he's requesting that we establish a non-reverting park fund. These funds are monies that come in when there's a registration of a kid that wants to play ball, softball, or baseball, or swimming, whatever, soccer, whatever it is, and that, those funds would then go to a non-reverting fund to be used for park inclusion down the road. But, basically, I explained that right, Jeremy?
Yeah, correct. Late last fall, we sat down and brainstormed several different projects. The one project that we had talked about was the future of Annan Oaks Park. We hired the land plan group to come in and do a master plan on Annan Oaks Park. Came up with a lot of good ideas, a lot of good points, that, you know, we could either do the whole big project if we would ever have the funding to do so, or it also identified a lot of little things that we could do on our own, you know, in smaller schemes. We had several meetings with the Leaks, and initiated basically a park user fee for the Leaks. It's very minimal fee, added on the entry. What that money is supposed to use for is just earmarked for maintenance and park improvements, or the softball, little league diamonds, stuff like that.
So, asking permission then for an ordinance, it has to be passed by ordinance, so we're asking permission to direct Mr. Baker to come up with an ordinance that establishes that non-reverting park fund.
Correct.
That's kind of what, that's what we're at tonight, so. Anybody can make a motion whenever they want.
Thanks, David.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Jeremy's also got some information from the park board concerning the park sign?
Correct. We also, in our list of projects and things that we would like to get accomplished during the near future, one of the items identified was new park signage for the individual parks and trails. Park signage alone, just the signs, and not, and the majority of the material, and the trailhead signs were right around $10,000. In a previous park board meeting, the park board members asked me to approach you guys as a group, to see if there would be any financial help for this project. You would not be paying for the whole entire project, you know, obviously, there's some miscellaneous, some little bit of concrete posts and stuff that would also be needed on top of that $10,000, but, we felt pretty comfortable at the $10,000 mark, for all the materials, the signs would be made here locally, the actual guy that would be making the signs will also be helping us install them. You're looking at roughly 12, 13-year lifespan, easily, you know, obviously, they, you know, they could be a little longer, they could be a little shorter, anyone damaged, vandalism, so on and so forth. It's more of a long term.
So, these signs are identity signs, basically, it says American Legion Park, or Hammond Park, or Kiki on the Park, and then some other signs are trailhead parks, so trail information signs.
Trailway, trailhead. A few years ago, Ryan Green from the Park and Recreation Office, he came up with a nice park logo that we're using pretty much on everything. The sidewalk, having a logo, it basically, it ties all those parks to the Parks Department, and it will really clean up the appearance.
Yeah.
Over time, we will do some landscaping and such in front of the signs, and just make it look a lot nicer.
I make a motion that we provide the $10,000. Phil, does the mayor have that kind of money?
No, he does not.
No money in the mayor's, but...
Where do you suggest we get it?
I would suggest you get it from the county, city council fund.
County council?
City council, yeah. County council, it's a job. So, you have a motion in a second for up to $10,000?
Yeah.
From the city council fund, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you, Jeremy. Thanks to park board for coming up with that. Okay, department heads, Nate?
None.
Daniel?
Nothing.
Greg, the police?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank a couple of people. This week, past week and a half, city workers have rolled together to take care of our land, TV, and what they, Jeremy, his crew, to find justice, they did, turn attention to the site. White Pierce, who was a strawberry, and his crew that we get everything put in, also Ben Baker, who was student with Ole State, he did the architectural drawing of the landscape.
I didn't know that.
Just did an excellent job, and I really do believe in justice, I really appreciate that.
Good. Thank you, Graham, thank you. Roger?
No, not good enough.
Mr. Hitzkorn? Jeremy?
This afternoon, we had a progress meeting on the Monroe Street project, everything's coming together very well. Tomorrow morning, hopefully, the pavement logo down on the portion of Pickway and the west side of Monroe Street, on Monroe, so...
Okay, good.
The majority of the sidewalks were poured, finished up today, we're lacking one half of the driveway in that Phase 1 of the project. Tomorrow and Thursday... Uh, tomorrow and Thursday, they will start on all the backfill, the cleanup behind the sidewalks, getting everything dressed up. Talking with Greg Cullen today, we want to leave that closed till next Friday afternoon. Uh, according to the contract, we have to have it open by the end of the day, next Saturday, but by leaving it till next Friday, it gives us some flexibility to get dirt work done, uh, and also gets the concrete another week to clear out, so we know if they lay drives on it, there's not going to be any issues. Overall, the project is going very well. We're way ahead of schedule, um, so as long as the weather holds off in the next month or so, you're seeing a big improvement out there.
Good.
There will be some inconveniences over the next probably three to four weeks. Uh, there will be some information going out to the water's edge area, Lake Shores, uh, north side of Monroe Street, as we get a little closer to the, to the sub-stabilization and such. We're going to try to limit the closure and maybe make as much as we can, but there's going to be a few days our answer is going to be tied, so. Uh, we will be, like I said, go on door to door and hang in some door hangers and some letters to make your land where.
Okay, good.
But overall, things are going very well.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, Bill Klarw?
I'd like to point out that code enforcement is out now that the weather's changed and moving at a very fast pace. Uh, and for city complaints from the public, uh, I'd like them to direct it to the building and planning at two six oh seven two four thirty eight fourteen, or the street department at two six oh seven two four thirty three four fifty six. Uh, if anybody within the, the neighborhood notices a vehicle that's not licensed, it's inoperable, please call in. If you notice your neighbors have tall grass, excessive weeds, and vegetation, call in, and if your neighbor's got accumulation of rubbish, please call in. You don't have to give your name, just give the location and code enforcement will take over from there.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I just want to get that out to the public.
Appreciate it.
I'll send that guy out.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill.
He looks mean.
Anne, you have anything? Melissa?
Two quick things, and especially about downtown, we'd love to thank Dan York and his crew of volunteers for planting flowers in the chamber flower pots that are up and down Second Street and all around the downtown area. So, colors starting to come downtown. Also, on Thursday this week, um, Decatur Main Street, the MOP group, the SIA group will be planting flowers in the circles at Pocket Park.
Oh, good.
On Thursday evening. We're still taking volunteers if anybody's interested, so things are starting to come around downtown.
I, on, on the, the park over here, I, I was Optimus said today that they're coming in next Monday, or Tuesday, and I think they're going to clean up weeds and things like that and.
We are, we are taking volunteers, groups, families, businesses, individuals to adopt the Pocket Park for a week through the end of October to weed, water, pick up trash, and be friends with the Pocket Park, so we, if you're interested and if your group's interested, um, let me know and maybe we'll find you out for a week.
Yeah. When are we going to get a name?
As I understand it, Main Street has selected a name and, um, the announcement of the name will be in great fashion on a later date.
Wow.
Great fashion on a later date.
Thank you, Melissa. I love that. The, the Optimus Club, and I, I was, I'm a member of the Optimus, that's why I say that, uh, they are committed to the first week of every month, not just this one.
Oh, okay, a week a month.
Yeah, a month, right. First week of every month, so, just for your records, okay? Uh, did I forget anybody? I don't think so.
Public?
Right, uh, we're going to go to council members here next. Have council members got anything they want to bring up? Okay. Um, oh, Phyllis, oh, you're down, you're down the list yet, so I don't, yeah. Comments from the public? Brett Smith's here. Brett?
Well, other than coming down here for coffee, I wanted to, uh, find out, is there a, um, proposal for the proposed roundabout or preliminary plan or something we can look at? Do you have any partner?
I'd send discussions. I, I, I really don't know a whole lot. I don't mean to put Melissa or Larry on a, Larry's, well, Nate's been helping him out too, so, let's go to Larry first. He's, he, he's, uh, involved with Main Street a lot, and that's, that's what's coming through is the Main Street group.
Well, we have hired a firm to come in to do a survey to see what kind of land acquisition we would have.
And that was GAI Incorporated of Fort Wayne.
And that has been completed. Um, basically, just trying to still get ideas on what to do, how to.
Feasibility.
Before it was replaced, we'll seek some input.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that property acquisition going publicly disseminated at all?
Uh, no, it's not. I, I don't think they started that process, correct? Yeah.
No, it, and I, it's really, they need to have just a conversation with the surrounding property owners to begin with, just to say, how, what are, what are your thoughts on this? What are your objections? What are your, there's no, there's not, there's no, not even close to having an idea of a proposal. I mean, that's, that's so far down the road, if they, you need to have a discussion first with the surrounding property.
Yeah, that's what Brett said. He, he, he's one of the property owners, on the corner.
He's on the corner.
Yeah, he's on the corner.
Specifically, if I'm correct, there was a concern about, uh, parking for you on , okay, Adams Street.
My question was, is it being discussed at all about converting, uh, the one block in Adams back to two-way, which obviously I'm opposed to.
Yep.
And I don't really know why that would be significant.
Yeah, it is in discussion. Uh, no decision has been made, but it has been discussed.
But is there a reason why that would even be proposed and if it's significant?
Partly because of, um, well, it's a great, I mean, pine and sky, if we have more traffic downtown and you end up closing off the downtown for festival and stuff, right now, we, we route them back down First Street, you, you bring them back through there, but there was a discussion with GAI about how they could work with the property owner, you, to, around that issue, okay? So, those are all things that, that's a part of the discussion, and all that group, and it's not just the Main Street group, there was a couple other, One and One Wellness and, and a lot of the downtown organizations that came together and, and are looking at this, this issue, but the next step was, hey, uh, do we need to move forward and the first step is talking to all the people that would be involved? If in fact there's a solution that can be had through that, then it would be a large-scale public education, you know, discussion, because, and they've done the research, it's fantastic. They had a presentation in here, um, you know, the concept, and I even hesitate to say roundabout, I want to say five points enhancement, because that concept, roundabout to begin with, is a very controversial topic, and they showed the data, it was amazing, that said, pre-construction, overwhelmingly negative, you know, about it. Post-construction, overwhelmingly positive. Um, so we understand that this is a new thing, it has to be, but the biggest issue is those who are immediately affected are property owners, so, um, yeah.
I spoke with John and I spoke with Matt, and contrary to what they might believe from our past conversations, I'm not definitely opposed to it.
Yeah.
The parking is a huge issue because even if we could somehow, I mean, we've got one small driveway now, and we've got more than one vehicle, but even if we could accommodate another vehicle or two, there's no place for guests or anybody else to park, we couldn't have John over for beer, you know, none of that would happen.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's our major concern.
Yeah.
Of course, the land acquisition is another part, but I don't even know if we would be involved in that or not, but.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know.
And even at that, there's a proper procedure that we have to follow, and we're not to that point yet, so that's kind of a long way off yet, but.
My question is, how long? What are we looking at? Five years?
Maybe, you may be able to.
There, there's a number, it depends on the scenarios, and part of the reason you haven't heard much is because it's a standard procedure for us to call for indoc, so it's not that.
Indoc is Department of Transportation.
Yeah, so to, to try to accommodate that and your rights as a property owner, we don't want to take information to you that may be improper and bypass your legal rights, so we're trying to develop kind of the concept, so we'll give you some good information to make sure that you're aware of what kind of concepts are there, but we want to work with the property owners developing. Um, the schedule, it varies quite a bit on indoc funding and that process, so the longer indoc takes and essentially doing call for project pushes that out. Even if indoc was asking today, I think we're looking at twenty nineteen before something would be constructed, but that's big, twenty twenty even, uh, for construction, for you to see that or complete it, but right now, that may be part of the time, so there's going to be a lot of discussions, a lot of public hearings, so I'm glad to see an interest, but certainly it's going to be, it's going to be slow to get that developed, so.
But we can't, I mean, I think.
We just want to get in on the front end of the.
No, absolutely.
And it's one of those things, like, we brought this up last year as a concept without really, I mean, doing it properly by talking to people are going to be affected. It was just an idea that was thrown out there and it seemed to create a lot of attract, or traction, but because of this issues of, well, when are you allowed to talk to people and it's almost you put the cart before the horse. You say, yeah, we're proposing it, but we haven't even talked to the, you know, property owners, so they've worked this out where we're, you know, we can have that kind of discussion and hear people's concerns.
Part of the process, uh, is that if we go through indoc to help fund this, which that appears the way we're going to go, uh, once we tell indoc that we want to do this project, then we can't talk to you guys. But, we haven't.
They will.
They will talk to you, but, but since we have not committed this project to indoc, we can come and talk to you. We can show you what we have now, uh.
That's, that's what I want to get.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. But we do have, I think Larry, Larry had, had mentioned that we hired a consultant to.
Right.
Give us a, an actual layout of what it would look like, how much, how much of your property or how much of somebody else is going to, you know, we can show you.
That'd be great.
We can show you that.
Where can I go look at that?
You know what? I, I don't know. Do you have that PowerPoint that Clint had?
You can download it.
You know?
I can give you an email address, an email.
Well, and it'd probably be good for.
We could, we could make, uh, if you want to come in, Melissa could show you the, uh, the video of that.
Either way, she can email it to me.
Okay.
I'll give her info when we're done.
Okay, good.
The other major concern too, which I'm sure you thought about, was, um, how to deal with the underground gas tanks from the gas station.
Oh, yeah.
Which has only been an issue for about thirty years, but.
You're, you're talking where the transmission shop is?
Probably both.
Or you're talking about the existing, existing.
But probably the transmission place as well.
Yeah, that would be, definitely have to be addressed, definitely, so. Well, is there something else you want to add to that? I, I don't know if we, we answered that? I hope we answered your questions, yeah, yeah.
What year is your home built?
Long time ago.
Long time.
Eighteen ninety, or eighteen ninety?
The eighteen nineties, I believe.
Obviously, they'd look at all of that in a feasibility.
Mr. Christie has some.
Like I told you in the email, we're still basically in feasibility mode.
Yeah, I'm not trying to jump the gun.
Oh, that's fine, no, no, we, we appreciate you coming in and wanting to find out. Christine Jeffs, you want to add to that, please?
I was kind of confused, they kind of came up with the concept, if you will, but as far as the federal process, um, typically, like, it's, it's the city which apply and maybe get the, we don't get that release of funds until they, they do one of those things, maybe an environmental review, we've done kind of a black survey, so I think the city has a general understanding of what issues are, but that would take a year.
Yeah, it's going to take a long time.
It's the historic nature of the area, that's the historic district, what impact would that have, and additions of everything, so, like you said, it is a long process, and after you would go through that, that's when there would be, um, an allowed engagement in the, the acquisition of the process, but that may make it a bit difficult for us to hopefully be.
Good point. I hope we've answered your questions. Please come on anytime. We're open to any questions. We'll, we'll try to give you the answers that we know. Thank you. Anybody else in the public here? Sherry?
Hi, I'm here representing the Tennessee Depot Restoration Committee, and, um, we have two fundraisers, um, coming up June sixth, Saturday, at the depot. We're doing an auction, so we are looking for donations of anything that anyone might have that is, you know, in still good working condition, that they might give us just to auction off. That is at ten AM on the sixth, and then we also have a cornhole tournament that will begin at noon at the, at the site, so we're.
Also on the sixth?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Back to back, and I'm here to kind of encourage council to give us support by, you know, attending and, um, maybe some of the people that play cornhole, you know, get a team together and, um, go ahead and register for the tournament, so if anyone has any ideas of anything, you know, for, um, cornhole, promoting it, or at least, you know, help us promote it in the community.
Good. Good luck. Thanks for having those events.
Thank you.
Hopefully it will be a success for you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Is he Nate?
Is he Nate? I couldn't remember the last name.
Night? You couldn't remember the last name? He said, turn on the light. Uh, when I was here a couple weeks ago, there was a big question about my trademark, and the next day it came out in the paper, Woman Warriors Encounters Legal Barriers, and I was not prepared, that's it, I was not prepared the next day for all the phone calls explaining my trademark. Uh, Mr. Baker there was assigned to check out the trademark of, uh, Woman Warrior Project. Uh, basically, I was accused of stepping on the national trademark twice, and as far as I tried to explain, our trademarks all come in the same place and they do not hand out double trademarks. Uh, this week, I received a copy, I assume Mr. Baker got, from Woman Warriors Project in Jacksonville. All they done was illiterate, illustrated that, uh, I was right, uh, they're in the rehabilitation and therapy business, I'm in the restaurant food business, therefore I was not stepping on their certificate, which I got my certificate through the same place they did. They also went as far to say that, uh, they applauded for what I was doing, creating a place where woman warriors can work and take care of themselves. That all was made a, uh, and the paper was made a public notice. I'm here tonight to present this so it can be made a matter of public record. I think it's only fair, since a lot of people read the paper and now is misconfused whether I'm legal or not, then I think they should be aware of, I am legal. Uh, the sculpture committee contacted me, I already paid for my spot, I will be there, so there's no confusion. And I thank Mr. Baker for giving such a fast response on this.
No problem.
So, are, are you requesting that we make this a matter of record and put it in the city records? Is that, is that your answer?
Well, given how many phone calls that I got on the, what happened a couple weeks ago, I think it's only fair that the public knows, I didn't do anything wrong.
Oh, I don't think that was ever intended, but.
And we are legal, because with, when a constable and warriors, there are a lot of people have questioned, when they donate money and stuff, where is my money going? When they come to our place, when they buy food stuff, they see they're supporting Woman Warriors working.
Okay.
So, I think it's only fair, before this sculpture tour takes place, that people can see this has been, whatever legal barriers that anybody thought there was, it's been settled, it's done, and we're not doing anything wrong.
That's fine. Good. We thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, make it a matter of our record.
Motion second. All favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, probably, uh, a couple more things real quick. Uh, on behalf of the city, I'd like to extend our condolences to Paul Zercher family, even though Paul's not a resident of Decatur, he had an impact on Decatur and all of Adams County, so just want to extend our condolences to his family, what a wonderful man. Next thing, on a happier note, we have somebody celebrating a birthday today, Mr. Baker here, his birthday today. What a wonderful man. Next thing, on a happier note, we have somebody celebrating a birthday today. Mr. Baker here, his birthday today. I won't say how old he is, but he's catching me. He'll never catch me, but he's getting closer. Also, Roger Gates, in three days, we'll be in the same age as Mr. Baker. It's not 61, and it's not 63. So anyhow, happy birthday, Jim.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Joe, did you have something you wanted to bring up, please?
I do. Yes, the stellar contract with Kristy.
Oh, glad you dropped that. I'm so sorry. Yeah, I forgot. We have a contract with, well, I'd like to propose a contract with Kristy Sturts to help us be involved in this stellar program. I forgot all about that. So, we have a contract here with Kristy Sturts Public Management in the amount of $15,000 designated out of the CTD fund, and I would like to have approval that I may sign that contract.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you, Phyllis. I forgot all about that. Anything else?
I just have a couple things to make a matter of record, which are sewer bonds.
Oh.
We had to, we're going to be selling the sewer bond, so we had to advertise them, and according to commercial records, and also in the Decatur Daily Democrat, just need to make that a matter of record here.
So moved. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Anything else, Phyllis? Tim?
Related to what Phyllis just talked about, the city is going to be placing for sale bonds on Thursday of this week to fund sewer projects. The bond issue will be for $6 million, and then assuming that that is successful, the closing will occur on June 4th. The other thing that I'll report related to the sewer utility is that we went forward with the refunding or refinancing of the 2004 sewer bond issue. It will save the city about $150,000, and that was completed as of today. So, we're moving forward.
That was bought by a local bank, right?
First Merchants was the buyer of that bond, and we were able to reduce our interest rate, and that's the savings that we recognized.
Good deal. Good. Anything else?
No. Move the claims, your papers posted.
Second. Motion pay the claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for coming.